Director of NAPD. And we welcome him to town. He moved up here from Conway.
Yes, sir.
And he's gonna bring about twenty more people, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, great.
Not just the kids, some great kids.
Appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll get into the park reports. Oh, excuse me, it's been minutes.
You should have in your bag at the June 23 minutes for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second and discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying?
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, our park reports. Have I got any more? Boy, it's good. Mr. Wade, did you get anything? What is this time? Mr. Minch.
Have two things, nothing for council tonight, just information purposes, subcommittee on police and fire matter, and I think we've resolved most of those issues. So, any further meetings, we will take to the full committee on August the 11th for discussion. I had requested also from Wade an update of the extended. He sent them to me today, but I wanted to wait until committee to give them to the council so they have time to review and discuss.
Well, I want to give you kudos, Mayor Gene kudos, and I kudos all of you guys who are hard on these pay scales. And I've looked at them, and they're all in favor now, everybody's on board, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Minch has done a, and look, he's done a fantastic job.
Perhaps that wouldn't be possible without me.
I know, I know that looks life slacker.
Yep.
Okay, I guess Mr. Baldwin's not here. Mr. Cracker, do you have anything you want to bring?
Want to give us an update on station two remodeling or not? If you don't want to, that's okay. Okay.
We've got a, we've been doing some remodeling out there, uh, put a new seal on the part of, new carpet in living room, new flooring down, uh, we've got some bids down, new lockers for section two, uh, the gas bathroom was the one out front, and just put a new band in. Just trying to update it. It just, uh, built, it's built back in the seventies and hasn't really been updated, so we're just trying to, trying to just update, uh, we're hoping to put some more flooring down, just kind of see where our budget all lays, and we might, if not, if we don't do it this year, we will do it next year. So, uh, everything's going good. And they started working on the door, the walk-in door, they started working on it, so we're doing well. Anything else?
Are you talking about the cut out door?
Yes.
That'll be good.
Yeah, we got it, it's cut out.
Yeah.
It's cut out now as a habit.
The new door.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Overalls is not here. We're gonna go down to you, Dean, and we're gonna get into ordinance and resolutions, and I'm gonna turn it over to you then.
Okay. Well, we're gonna vote on the smoking variance tonight, but I would like to propose to table that until August if anyone.
Do you make that motion?
I'm asking for someone. A second.
Well, you make the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, motion, then make the table. All in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying?
Aye. Because of the reason, I mean, you were the only one.
This meeting, we do want to get some more information together before, so we can review it further.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay.
I just want to point out, when somebody makes a motion to table, you can't have a discussion, so they go right on into the vote, so I pushed that a little fast, so I'll just put that out there.
How many friends?
Oh.
You learned that the hard way.
Yeah, you slapped me one time.
Somebody else did.
Yeah.
Both of us.
We also have the dog ordinance, there was some dramatic errors that we had to correct, but then we need to bring it to the council to vote on, to approve this to the law.
I'll make a motion to approve the dog ordinance by second amendment presented.
Let me help out just a little bit. This would be placing this ordinance on its first reading. It will require three readings. They don't have to all be done tonight unless you did suspend the rules, but it will require being placed on its first reading.
Make a motion, we place it on its first reading by title only?
By second.
Motion, place it on its first reading by title only, and a second. Any discussion on this? Any other discussion? Well, I do have a few questions. Firstly, here we go to the minister. Uh, Jeff and I, Jeff may not, but I have kind of a little bad taste in my mouth about a dog ordinance. We tried it twice, I think. The last time, we had about five or six hundred people buy tags that first year. Am I right?
Second.
Yeah.
I don't think you had that many.
Oh, I may be overstepping there. Anyway, it dropped tremendously the second time, it dropped. The second year, the third year, it was almost nil. Without a good enforcement of the ordinance, and I think we need to discuss this more, but this is only my thoughts behind it, I don't think it will work, believe it or not. I have talked to all the vets concerned, they are not for it. I will tell everybody that upfront. They are not for this ordinance. And I'm more or less, I'll shut up, send my little piece.
I thought that when we originally considered this ordinance, that we contacted all the veterinarians in the county, and they were not.
Well, I didn't contact everyone in county, I will admit to that, only the ones in the city.
Yeah, it was just the ones in the city, but.
Yeah, but I didn't think there was any opposition.
Actually, I'm just telling you, you all can contact the vets if you want to too, but I have talked them personally.
So, Mr. Mayor, what are our options as far as enforcement?
Well, it's gonna fall on the police department. That's where the enforcement department's gonna fall. Can our animal control do it? Not with one person. I've talked to other, since you brought that part up, I've talked to other places, also other cities. They have multi animal patrol officers that have these things here, that they don't just have one, and they have other entities to help, but it's up to you. We will, we will abide by the law, and we will enforce the law if this ordinance is passed to the best of our abilities. We will not fall.
Yes.
Yes.
I won't be going door to door knocking on doors, obviously, asking you have a dog license, but if we come and contact with the dog, it doesn't have the license, we will issue a citation.
Did we not have this information prior to our, during our committee meeting?
Yeah.
About the?
We talked about it months ago.
No, I'm speaking to.
About the opposition.
The information.
No, we did not. This is the first I've heard of this.
Is there any way that the Ozark Humane Society can assist us as far as making sure, going through the legwork of making sure, for example, John Q. Public has a license this year, he didn't renew it, that they can say, contact them and say, hey, do you still have your animal? Have you not gotten a new license? Is that a function that we can ask them?
Well, that would be an enforcement issue, unless it's in the ordinance or something. I guess we could subcontract as such, or whatever. I don't know, man.
I understand where you're going with that. Wasn't this presented earlier, a few months ago, that the veterinarians had agreed that they would sell the licenses when people brought their dogs in to be vaccinated, and that the vets would keep a dollar or two, or something out of the fee, and what happened to that?
That's what I understood, because that's our understanding.
That's the way I remember.
Well, I.
How's that call Wade, Dan?
Well, according to me, it has. According to what I've researched, and I've talked, and I've talked to Humane Society about this also, you know I went to little vets.
I don't know, y'all wouldn't know that.
Well, I thought, I thought I told you I went to meet one of them.
In the last meeting that this came up, you said that Affordable Vet had an issue with the dollar amount. That's all he told us.
Well.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
And I don't know the protocol, and I'm not up on my Robert's rule, but.
We can, we can recognize you.
Okay, thank you. Could we maybe get the vets and all of us in the same room at the same time? Because when they were all in the same room with us, they agreed to be a provider, not an enforcer, a provider of the tags. So, if you're getting a different story now, I just think we all need to get in the same room and maybe get the same story at the same time.
You're probably right.
So, how would we go about that now? Would they come to the next committee meeting, maybe, or?
I would say we need to have a separate meeting with everybody, not.
Maybe with the ordinance committee? Yeah, just with the ordinance committee, with the veterinarian.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor, or on the table.
Send the motion to, to put it on its first reading, to put it on its first reading by title only. Well, that, it doesn't mean you. Right, what I'm saying is, I don't know that, it's obvious that there's gonna possibly be changes.
I don't know.
If you're going to go further, or further investigation, maybe a motion to table the motion.
Send it back to the ordinance committee. I'll make that motion.
I would say, I guess.
I have a motion down here in a second.
Mayor Gene second.
Mayor Gene second.
Okay, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
When did, at what point did you talk to the vet?
Oh, gosh, it's been a month ago.
I was just a little shocked that we didn't make aware of that.
Well, never one to bump that up, really, to tell you the truth.
At the last committee meeting.
We talked about.
That's how I got sent to the council.
At the last committee meeting.
Should have spoke up, I guess. My fault. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move down into legislative audit. Everybody's had, hopefully had a chance to read the audit. We do, only thing we have to do this is, we need a motion to accept legislative audit and a vote. That's the only thing we really need, unless somebody's got some questions about legislative.
I have no questions. I read it, like I say, before the last council meeting, but I wasn't able to be here, so.
I forget, I forgot.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the legislative audit.
A motion to approve. Very second. A second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying? Motion carried. Okay, on your new business list, you had taxi service there. Well, within our taxi service ordinance, there's a clause in there that if a new taxi service approaches to have a taxi, we had to have a public hearing. And the gentleman was here, Jeff and I talked to him about it. Man, I'll let you get into detail if you want to do that, so.
Well, it's part of the code in here, and it, um, it requires public notice of a public hearing to give anyone a chance, even the other taxi service operators. I guess we only have one that's been approved here in Harrison, but it, it's in black and white, it's a requirement, and I recommend that we follow the code. So, we will take newspaper notice, I think the date of August 11th at our next council or committee meeting night, maybe having a public hearing, maybe that evening, and I think we could act quickly to always get the notice published in time for that, and give everybody a chance to say whether they have objections to another taxi service, or any other topic that's relevant to granting a citation. Then it would need to come back to council business meeting, which our next one would be a month from now, the August meeting. And I know that delays the applicant, but under the circumstances, that's, that would follow the code, and would be my recommendation.
It does, and, and I ask, at that meeting, at that hearing that we had with him, or at that last committee meeting, he also mentioned about the way he would like to, that would also require change of the ordinance, and that we also need to have an ordinance changed at that time.
That he would like to, uh.
It was a billing.
No, we can, it says here in the code that whatever we do can be done by just adopting a resolution that would authorize him to be licensed, and we can attach whatever his billing rate that's approved by the council. That too is part of the approval, and it can be attached to that resolution. There's no requirement that we go back and amend the ordinance. It's done by resolution.
So, that's where we take, that's where we stand on taxi service. And then Jeff will get something in favor.
This doesn't happen very often, and I know Jeff hasn't dealt with it a lot, nor have I, which it just meant that we had to go back and read this ordinance, and lo and behold, it tells us how to deal with this.
Is everybody.
Should need a motion for that, though.
No, no, is everybody comfortable with that, doing that on the left, in that public hearing?
Could hold that public hearing for the council, like thirty minutes before?
Probably fifteen.
It's appropriate, that's, that's just a committee meeting, so we can do it, advertise it for the six o'clock, it'll just delay our committee meeting probably for a few minutes. We don't usually get a lot of reaction to these public hearings, but in case somebody does want to speak, we can deal with it, then move right into your committee meetings. I think that's better than trying to do it at 5:30 or something.
I agree.
And get rid of it in five minutes, and then sit here for twenty-five minutes.
Six o'clock.
Okay? Good. Thank you, man. Okay, we'll move down to the airport lease. And this lease is only a continuation of the current lease, extension, I might say, to the current lease, but before you, you have the renewal lease agreement, and also the old lease. I'll give you all a second, if you all haven't read over that.
Can I make a few comments, maybe, to help some of the new council members here? This, I think the background, Joel's been here a long time, and he may know this better than I do, but the background is that it's sometime years past, the city built the fire station that's at the airport, and to do that, we had the lease from them, the ground where that building was built. That is beneficial to the city in that the city serves citizens, residential citizens, and it, it helps us keep our ratings high and the premiums low for your insurance. So, it benefited us to do that then. Also, it was beneficial to the county that is in a county airport. FAA requires there to be fire service close enough to respond, I think, within three minutes to anything that might happen on the runways dealing with aircraft. So, I guess to step this up to where it was in 2011, I think it was, I guess that would be Mayor Crockett at that time, we entered into an updated agreement because FAA had some really stiff requirements for maintaining the air, the fire service to the airport. And at that time, I think I described this backwards when we were in committee meetings, but it's basically a trade-off. They'll let us continue to use the ground there, and they have appraisal and evaluation of the correct rental amount, but instead of paying them that rent, we provide the services back to benefit of the airlines out there to keep commercial airplane service to our airport. And the city being in the business of having a trained fireman and fire equipment, the county has no trained firemen that I know of, and no equipment, so it was a good trade-off for us to use our abilities, get the benefit of having that fire station there, and furnishing the men, the equipment, or the personnel, maybe not always men, the personnel and the equipment, and the training, and the special, they call it an ARF truck, A R F, whatever that stands for. And it's been a good deal for us to trade that off for the last five years, and probably, I think it even went on before that. And this is simply an authorization to the mayor, giving him authority to enter into a five-year renewal or extension of that same agreement. No additional cost in terms of the trade-off, it's strictly a trade-off that benefits the city of Harrison County and Boone County.
Now, if you didn't understand Van, you can look at section three of the old lease. He just pretty well covered the whole thing. Okay, any other questions about this lease? We do have some representatives here with the airport, if you do have anything. There being none, I entertain a motion to authorize the mayor's office to sign the lease.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I'm sure the answer to this question, but I have to ask it on the finance committee. Is there no funding available for the, for the repairs of the truck, or to offset some of the expense, federal funding from the FAA?
You would have to probably ask Marvin, our fire chief, or Jim Sprott. It's like, I didn't see him till just now. Jim could have told this story probably a lot better than I did.
No, no, you did fine.
I don't want anybody here to answer that question.
I can answer it.
Yes, oh Judy.
I can answer that.
Judy's here to answer that question.
Unfortunately, no, the FAA purchased that truck for the airport, and in the agreement on purchases, we're responsible to own and maintain the truck for a minimum of twenty years. They consider after twenty years, then it's.
Can we not do one after twenty years?
Not unless they make us provide 139 service again, which was very expensive for the city and the county, so I'm, but, no, there's no money for that, unfortunately.
My question.
Judy, are you and Jim recommending this to be extended, just like we have stated tonight? Is that?
Absolutely, yes. It's a good deal for the airport and the city.
I have a question. When did y'all send the lease over to, for Van to look at it?
I don't recall. Seems to me like I emailed it to you then, when you were on vacation, or something?
Not at then, but Brian, the, um, my first understanding was, is that they were making some changes or something to the entire lease, and that it was a new lease. I didn't understand that it was a renewal, and just actually until we started looking for it and found it in my emails this morning.
And then one of the, one of the issues has been, we had to have it reappraised, so after we emailed it, we had to get that done, so it took a little while.
The lease itself has been somewhere in city records. I asked if the mayor's office knew where it was this afternoon, but I don't think it's been located yet, but we, I think copies have been finally made.
Yeah, found original. Yeah, 418, it got mailed to us.
Yeah.
And I just remember at the committee, we talked about this, and one of the things we said is, we had no problem, we could get it ahead of time, and it gets, it just got emailed to us.
Well, things do happen, though.
I really.
I apologize for it, but.
And there's probably not a problem with the lease, but it doesn't give us any time to look over it at all.
Any further discussion? A motion in second on the table. All in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, I'm down in a few of my comments, or I'll get that up there. This week, we got from, well, a lot of the train here from the forestry service. They count on the trees out at the water plant, and they marked the trees out there, 181 trees, that they recommend being cut down. It's about twenty, almost 26,000 more feet. They also give us some names of individuals that do that type of work, but being some money involved, we're gonna, Wade is gonna submit a bid proposal, and we, we will accept bids for the removal of the trees, especially when there are that many more feet involved in it. It probably won't bring in a lot of revenue to the city, but it'll be some, some revenue. We're actually doing, not for the revenue, but to help the newer trees, the younger trees, brothers out there. That's, it comes on a recommendation from the forestry service. But, being, those are owned by the city, to sell them, I think I had to have approval of the council to do that. I may be wrong, but I don't think I can sell a city property without the approval of the council.
Go for it.
Go for it. Okay. Anyway, I'm asking the council to give the city approval to sell those trees.
Well, I'm aware of the problem out there, because I don't, I had been contacted about that, and they said that they would also replant part of the trees, the forestry well, and those people there. I had, I had been contacted about that earlier.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed saying? Thank you. Okay, our city's also gone into, with our server, our internet server, we've now got an alert system, and you need to get on the, I want to bring this up, you need to get on the city of Harrison website, and it's got some prompts down at the bottom of the page. You just go down to register for updates, and you can get in there and put either your email, or your phone number, or whatever, how you want to get a prompt from the city on alert system. And sign up for it, for free, by the way, it's free, and actually, this did not cost the city anything either. We are looking into some other alert system, but at this time, we're going with this one. I think we're up to 143 people signed up right now, and actually, we just did this, what, Wade, about a week ago, or less than a week ago?
I think so, yeah.
But I encourage people to get on there and get signed up. What we'll use this for mainly, and it stemmed over the border, a lot of it stemmed over our last border, and it get, we won't put general stuff on. our last bollower, and we won't put general stuff on there, it's major things, like a bollower, say we had something, some disaster, something happened, or something, or some area that we didn't want somebody to go to, or whatever, we'll only put certain things on there, and you'll be alerted by a street closing, or a water pipe break, or whatever. But anyway, I encourage everybody to go to our city website and sign up on that. Okay, roll down the room. We'll pass some things around, we got several of them. Okay, also, about a month ago, a gentleman from Woodman Light came to the office, and he looked outside and saw some of our American flags, and he said, you all need some new flags. Well, this gentleman, his name is Dale Greenhall, and I will recognize him, he is going to keep the city supplied in new flags for free, so that's a great thing. I think we have several at the forest complex, we have one here at city hall, one over at the youth center, one down in the public works building, but I want to recognize him for doing that, that's a great asset, we'd like to have those flags flying high.
Thank you.
He's down here, so, good thing. Okay. I'll go down here with the last little note I got. Filing period for council people, 29th of July to noon August 19th. Bring that up, anybody's interested in running for council, so.
I do.
I think that's the day, at noon. Okay, that's all I have to comment on, I will open it up to council, council wants to bring anything up right then?
I have three individuals that have called me, I know we have a problem with the keys at the park, I've had three individuals, two of the same that I mentioned before, and now another one, that called me about coyotes in town, coyotes, and I know that at the time, we didn't have an option, but if this problem gets worse, we're going to have to hunt or something, so.
Our animal crew is aware of it, so pleased by it. Yeah, we've had a few, well, eaten out of bears, and now I think we have another one. Two of them, yeah.
Maybe they just lack.
I guess we'll have to pass an ordinance to not feed the bear.
That'll require several things, science too. Okay, any other council people have any for?
I'd like to say something about Wade, I've been working these tournaments, this is about a month ago, I didn't get to recognize him, I know we recognize him about the ice and snow on the roads, but we had a state tournament here, and Wade brought his crew out, even Wade came out and helped us pull tarpes real quick, we had like thirty-six teams out there, and helped us with the tarp, so I never got to recognize him here at the council, so.
Did Wade do that by show, or?
Wade and me were one on one end, and he was on the other.
Thank you, Wade.
They're on the tarp, so I just wanted to recognize him and the crew, I don't, we haven't fed them or anything, but we really appreciate that y'all have helped us coverage, and it really helped the tournament run so well, so I'd like the council to know that they did that, so.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I will open it up to general public, anybody like to say anything, or? Nobody saying anything, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.